Along with seeking input on potential new drought regulations. So we'll get an update on the status. We're going through the demand status, also the water supply status, current water supply strategy, proposed water supply strategy, proposed demand management strategies, and have hopefully a good council discussion input at the end. As we showed this, keep updating this graphic, basically, the central coast or south coast of Santa Barbara County is the epicenter of the current drought, and that's really what we continue to be struggling with, and it is, it's difficult being the hotbed for this continuing issue. Looking ahead, NOAA has predictions out for January and March that are showing below-average rainfall is expected for January through March. Again, they blew it last year on the January through March predictions, so we take it all with a grain of salt, but it certainly isn't the optimistic sign that we'd like to see going into the sixth year of this drought. Demand status, if there's a positive aspect to it, it's the way the community continues to conserve. We saw 42% conservation for August, which is absolutely fantastic, a little bit cooler than normal, saw a little bit of coastal fog, which was nice, but I think people are really paying attention to what's going on, and Kachuma being at 7.5% is a very startling reality. Where that puts us, since declaring a stage three drought emergency, we are at a 36% conservation, and what we're going to be transitioning to in the coming months is talking about our 12-month running averages, but really, we need to start focusing on, and right now, we're at 35% conservation, and we need to increase that. So Lake Kachuma, this is currently 14,468 acre feet, 7.5% of capacity. The barge was successfully moved in late June, just in time for the downstream release, and I got some great pictures showing how stranded that barge would have been. The downstream release began on July 12, and we had anticipated somewhere around 8,000 acre feet of a release. The actual release ended up being significantly more, and eventually concluded on August 29. The lake elevation dropped by about 16 feet during that, basically, six-week period, and the challenge that we face is, there was a minimum pool that had been established of 12,000 acre feet, and that was kind of a buffer. It belonged to the Bureau of Reclamation, and was to facilitate the passage of our imported water, and to also, I think, absorb significant changes or unexpected changes, and, well, it did that for the downstream users, and in that sense, the minimum pool now is at 7,300 acre feet, which is 4,700 acre feet lower than we had been projecting for this time, which is this very scary situation. This is what I would consider kind of the contingency. I think we've done prudent planning here, but I can't necessarily speak for the detailed water supply planning of all of our neighbors, and should they get into trouble, this would be the water that I think they'd want to borrow from, and while it's not there, and so, part of the reason why we need to push forward with doing some more. City carryover water to be exhausted by December 2016. The water that we have been fortunate to carry forward as a result of conservation has been immensely helpful, but that is coming to an end, and that water, we expect to be gone shortly. Lake Kachuma is critical to storage and conveyance of imported water, so it's going to continue to serve a role, even though it doesn't have any, Kachuma allocation is again at zero, but our ability to bring in imported water, which we're doing now, and stockpiling in the lake to help us eventually meet those peak demands for next summer. We did have some optimistic news come out that shows that the extension of the pipeline, which comes just over the dam, we do have a little bit more time before we need to implement putting in that pipeline that basically would bypass the lake for the most part. It looks like we have until spring of 2018 before that would be needed, based on the latest projections and conservation by the south coast, so that is helpful, but it'll be upon us shortly. Will we be talking about implementing that major project? It's about 10,000 linear feet of pipe, so we'd be basically talking about a total of 20,000 linear feet of pipe, basically bypassing the lake to get water from the dam to Teckalote Tunnel. Hilton Creek, this is the fish issue. We, the Bureau, hasn't had much success in being able to move, omikus is kind of the general term for steelhead and trout, kind of a general description of both species, and unfortunately, couldn't get concurrence on moving the fish into a hatchery so they could be protected. There's a push by NIMCs to keep them in the watershed. We didn't explore ideas of having a fish, a hatchery of sorts to keep them within the basin, wasn't successful at being able to do that, and the Bureau ultimately installed four, 5,000 gallon tanks that they are filling by truck right now to sustain that small population of steelhead. Usage is fairly minimal, so to the extent that it's keeping the, what fish are there alive is helpful. We certainly wish we could be doing more. Ongoing discussions continue with NIMCs, but they have been unproductive so far. Here's a graphic showing the last drought versus where we are today, and we missed that miracle month of March, and we currently are sitting in uncharted territory for the lake. The last time the lake was here was when they were filling it in the 50s. This was a picture we showed in the spring, the intake tower. This is where the barge was, and this is currently where the barge is located. This is an updated picture. It's 180 degrees from that last picture, so the tunnel is over here in this corner. This is where the barge was in June. It, we had dug it out so that we had a little more room to operate, but we got that barge out of there just in time, showing you how quickly the lake has transformed over the summer. That area is high and dry. Our barge is now operating right here, and the imported water that I was talking about comes into the lake right over here, and so that pipeline that potentially could be necessary would take the water coming in from the dam, from the imported water, and move it over here to the barge to be pumped out. On September 9th-
Is that what you mean essentially by bypassing the lake?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. On September 9th, a state water rights order was issued for Kachuma. It is an order that's been in the works for about 15 years. It is an interesting time for it to come out. We are scrambling to get comments together. The comments are due by October 25. We will be focused on the effects of invasive species such as bass and other predators on steelhead. We contend that that's been a challenge for the recovery of that species, given that the bass love the warm water, and the steelhead are a great source of food. Impacts to this primary water supply for more than 200,000 residents. We want to know what the, the state board chose a, an option that hadn't been on the table. It was kind of a hybrid that they kind of coupled together, and so we don't exactly know what the impacts will be to our water supply, so we are working to try and model those impacts to have a better understanding. CCRB, the member agencies, the city, Goleta, Montecito, we're all committed to protecting the primary water supply in communities throughout the region, along with the important environmental priorities that it represents. Also committed to working with the State Water Board, Bureau of Reclamation, and other agencies to continue our efforts, and just kind of a summary, we've spent more than $2 million a year invested for habitat restoration and fish management projects on the river. There has been substantial water released for steelhead to try and recover this species. There have been numerous fish passage projects that have been done to open up about 14 miles of habitat, and again, we just continued efforts to try and monitor and evaluate the steelhead health and population levels. Imported water, kind of a summary of where we've been this last year. We've been very successful. We bought 4,000 acre feet of water from the Antelope Valley East Kern Water Agency. We were able to get about 2,000 acre feet from our Table A allocation for this year, and we just got word recently that we're getting our water that we had banked in a groundwater bank in Kern County back, and that's the Dudley Ridge Bank Water. So total, we were able to secure 7,265 acre feet. Our community right now is using 9,500 acre feet a year. The challenge is, we can't get all this water here at the same time. We can deliver guaranteed delivery of 3,300 acre feet. Obviously, if others aren't using capacity, we'll try to deliver more, but that is one of the challenges we face, but we believe we have water now going out into 2019 that we can keep that pipeline full and busy, and certainly, we'll be looking this year, but our, what we're looking to probably acquire this year will be smaller. CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority, has implemented improvements to maximize deliveries to the lake. We do appreciate their efforts to try and squeeze a little bit more out of that pipeline. However, there's always the chance that that pipeline could go down, and we have to be aware of that, and that's one of the importance about building up a contingency and having some reserve in Kachuma in case that happens. We are planning, with reservoirs in Northern California being near full, that we should be able to get at least a 35% allocation for this next year. As I'd mentioned, we do have constraints. Everybody here on the south coast is going to be trying to maximize delivery of the pipeline, so we think to plan for anything more than 3,300 acre feet would be inappropriate. We are working with CCWA to see if we can't get the January, they're tentatively planning to take down the state water project to do maintenance. There is an effort in November to try and do it without taking it down. We're hoping they're successful. We're pushing hard, but obviously, we also want to make sure that the system is maintained and doesn't go down on us unexpectedly. Gibraltar has just a little under 600 acre feet, 11% of capacity, and we're really, really challenged with the water quality that's in the reservoir. We've been exploring all different options to try and treat that water. As you can imagine, it's been evaporating, and the organics have just continued to concentrate in there. The organics are nearly four times what they are from Kachuma, and the challenge with the organics is they react when we treat it. They react, unfortunately, with our chlorine and create a byproduct called trihalomethane. It's something we've talked about for a long time. It was the big push for ozone, and ozone has done a lot to help us, but this water quality here is really difficult. It coincides, though, that we also have a requirement under the Jin Chow judgment. It was a very famous legal dispute in which the cities recognizes impacts from Gibraltar on the downstream users, and so we've been accumulating water in the lake, and we think it's the appropriate time now to let that water go. Go ahead and try and clean out some of that highly organic water that we have in there, try and make some space for some better water quality, hopefully, this winter. And then we move to the Ray Fire, which certainly didn't help us. It did get into the Gibraltar watershed. We did meet with the bear group, and their best estimates right now is we should see probably about 500 acre feet of debris moving into Gibraltar. We saw approximately 2,000 acre feet from the Zaca Fire. Certainly, this isn't anything positive for the future of Gibraltar, which is just under 6,000 acre feet of capacity now, and so, disappointing, and we also saw some difficult water quality after the Zaca Fire. We hope it's not, not as bad with this one, since it is a little bit smaller, but it didn't help. Groundwater wells, we do have all eight of our potable groundwater wells in service. We are continuing to monitor for seawater intrusion. This is our, I think, greatest threat right now to the lower wells that we have operating, and we are going to be increasing the frequency of the monitoring. I was reminded that after the last drought, because we pumped the groundwater basins pretty heavily, it took approximately 20 years for us to push the seawater back out of the basin based on the last drought, and so we're highly sensitive to that. We rested that basin for a long time in order to flush those salts out, so trying to keep from causing any irreversible damage to our groundwater basin. We're monitoring it closely and anticipate at some point, we'll have to be idling potentially some of our ground, our downtown wells. D-SAL, structural foundations are complete. Major underground utility work is complete. The treatment trains have been delivered to the site, and they're currently undergoing testing. Offshore, the marine work began on July 26. Got word today that the barge that's going to be critical for placing a lot of the equipment will be showing up in mid to late October. Continue with the challenges that we raised in August concerning those special transition pieces and putting this back together. We have a plan, and now it's all about executing that plan. Still anticipating a production goal of January, but I continue to raise the flag that there are vulnerabilities to that schedule out of our control. That leads me to why we need to continue to plan for any potential delays. I just, I think there are way too many things out there threatening our supply that we really just need to, to build up a contingency and be available in case something doesn't work out. So here's our current water supply strategy. We are, October 1st, we will be in year six. I'm kind of moving forward here. We added another year to our graph here. We're looking out to 2019. So October 1st starts our new water year. We are anticipating the production, D-SAL, it's a little bit diminished from what we anticipate in a full year. We will be importing water. We did get some state water allocation. We'll be leveraging groundwater as much as we can. We have our recycle water facility up and running and meeting the needs of the community, and that's with 35% conservation. When we look out, though, we are recognizing a shortage out here in year eight, but I think, as we talked about last time, we're also recognizing a shortage this year, and it's, it's interesting. We have adequate water. It's all about getting that water here when we need it, and I have a little graphic to kind of show, but when you break it down, here's the supplies that we're using or planning to use on a monthly basis, and when we look out to August, September, and October, we're recognizing this shortage. Even with 35% conservation, this shortage amounts to about 300 acre feet of water that we need to be able to basically stockpile between now and August in order to meet those needs. This does not include any contingency water. And here's kind of what the lake storage looks like. This is probably one of the most dismal graphs. As we continue to, we have just under 2,000 acre feet in there now. The water, we anticipate somewhere around January will be nearing the bottom, and this is what's challenging about the state water shutdown. We anticipate during those winter months, though, with demand low, we should be able to start building up some surplus, but we should be somewhere up here in the 1,000 acre foot, 800 acre foot range in order to meet this shortage for next summer. So what we will be talking about today is looking to move the community to a 40% conservation. That 40% conservation addresses the shortage in 2019, and it gets us enough water to the lake so that we don't experience any shortages this summer. So as far as demand reductions, you know, just a reminder, our cumulative average conservation now is at 36%. The city faces a worsening water supply situation with a shortfall of 300 acre feet in the summer of 2017. We also need to reestablish a contingency supply of 500 acre feet minimum. Goals for the new demand reduction measures are to protect the community's investment in trees and shrubs, minimize impacts to economic activity in the community, and generate 800 acre feet of new savings, which translates to the 40% target. Staff has estimated savings of between 500 and 1,200 acre feet from a general ban on turf grass irrigation. No other measures have been identified with comparable saving potential. Now, the challenge, you see the 500 to 1,200. Knowing what this community has done, I expect that we'll see results closer to 1,000, 1,200, but what's challenging about this is a lot of people have already let their lawns go, so it's difficult to know how many of them have let their lawns go, and then, on the other hand, how many people will respond to this? There may be folks who continue to water, and we don't, you know, can't, don't know about it, and so it, it does make this a little challenging, but given the track record we've seen from this community, I'm, I'm thinking we're going to see closer to 1,000 from them, which is, would be fantastic for allowing us more flexibility to deal with the drought, and certainly, if it rains, we would be looking to pull back on this, but this is something that we feel like we need to be discussing now and implementing to get the community on board, because we don't have any room to miss this one. A general ban on irrigation of turf grass with potable water. Certainly, recycled water customers would be exempt, along with playing fields at schools and childcare centers. We're looking to obviously try and open up our public spaces if there is, if they are being used. It's not just ornamental grass, but actively used. I think that's a good use still of water. I think that should be left on the table. We have recognized commercial uses. Now, golf courses, more than 90% of their water comes from recycled water, but there are the small areas around the putting greens, basically, that do use a small amount of water that we are, we are contemplating exemptions for. Also exemptions for grasses that meet the Waterwise certification. There are grasses out there. We have customers who have that in that use. You water it once a month. It basically uses 30% of what normal grass uses, and we feel like we want to continue to support that. That's a, that's something that I think is appropriate for our climate. Turf areas directly related to business activities. We are contemplating ceremonial areas where, you know, there's actively weddings going on, and it makes sense that the grass needs to be green, but again, these would be exemptions that we'd be looking at, talking with the owner, how are you going to meet the 40%, even if you're watering your turf, you know, kind of, kind of trying to explore how, how we're still going to meet the target, even, even if you're going to water your lawn, but trying to strike that balance, understanding there are commercial uses of turf that I think at this time could be exempted. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brook to talk about the development impacts.
Thank you, Joshua. Renee Brook, city planner, and I'll discuss a little bit over the next few slides. Another area where, when we consider potential water demand management, we look to new development coming online and having its own additional demands for water. So far, Joshua's talked quite a bit about how we might conserve water from existing land uses, and looking forward, in light of the projected water shortage and the community concerns still continuing to see development being constructed, it's worth exploring, and staff did just that. Council has also discussed this topic on numerous occasions, as well as the Planning Commission in the past, and to date, it's been decided that the, the small amount of water that could be saved through any type of moratorium or limitation on new development would not, would not be favored in light of the potential economic impacts that it might have, and that continues to be true. So the city water demand during a normal year is 14,600 acre feet per year, and during our current drought condition, our target is 9,500 acre feet per year. We looked at the past 10 years that new development has demanded in terms of water, and it still holds at an average of about 27 acre feet per year for all new development coming online, and that's 0.28% of our current drought water demand. And then looking at everything, all projects we have in the pipeline, as we call it, that are pending or approved, so not currently under construction, but they are pending or approved, totals 179 acre feet per year, and those projects are further broken down for you as an attachment to the council agenda report by land use. Now, given that, oh, just one more point on this. I do want to point out, though, that that is a worst-case scenario at this point, because if typical trends hold true, we, we really only see about half of that development actually come online. For any number of reasons, development doesn't go forward, or it doesn't get their approvals, but 179 acre feet per year is what we're seeing right now on the books if all potential projects were constructed, and we would expect to see that actually metered out over several years. They don't, of course, all come online at the same time. Thanks. And this graph just shows, again, that 10-year average that I mentioned. This is historical water demand for new development going back to 2006, and you see it varies, obviously, as development is cyclical. That 10-year average line there of 27 acre feet per year is where we developed that. And then this here shows that 179 acre feet per year of the potential water demand for all new development, and this just divides it between the approved and pending projects. And an approved project is something that has its land use or design review entitlements, but not yet its building permit. A pending project doesn't even have its land use entitlements at this point. It's just either very early in the planning process or conceptual review at design review.
So just on that back slide, if we're looking at the next water year, so a year from now for a year from now, we really are looking at the approved projects, what would potentially be online using water, do you think, at a maximum, or do you think any of the pending projects can get through development approvals, building permits, and built?
Madam Mayor, if you're asking about this current water year or the one we're about to start in October-
We're about to enter in October.
I would expect very few of the approved projects to be actually constructed and demanding water within the water year. Some smaller ones might be, but not any significant amount in that approved project.
Just in the approved project, and then any in the pending projects?
Again, maybe very small. That might be adding just one additional unit could potentially go through very quickly, but not a significant amount.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned at the outset, again, even with updated numbers, staff believes the quantity of savings that would be realized by placing any type of moratorium or restriction on new development is short of the projected shortfall that we project. Also, as Joshua mentioned, really, where we need to see this additional savings is by next summer, and as the mayor just pointed out in her question, to restrict development at this point wouldn't save us that 300 acre feet at a minimum that we need by next summer, but it would be something to consider going out beyond. And again, as I mentioned, it would likely have significant economic impacts in the community, and also could prevent occupancy of these housing units that are currently being proposed, and it's important to know that any new development would, of course, be subject to the same regulations that we would be asking of existing water customers, so any type of restriction on irrigation and, and all of that would, would also, of course, apply to any new development.
Mr. Dominguez has a question.
Hi. Can you tell me a little bit about the economic impacts?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, what's meant by that is really largely the construction industry, but also all those professionals that work projects through the entitlement process, and again, the, the business owners, property owners, and those who might occupy the buildings or are looking to improve their properties that, that could potentially be harmed or not realized, any investment that they've already put into their property or their conceptual projects.
So you're referring to projects that are already being in the construction process, so there's people actually working onsite to build these?
Well, correct. I believe there's, there's two potential components. There's those that are actively working through the, the planning or design process, and they have certainly quite a bit of money invested, but then there's also people potentially contemplating improvements, but would be more of an unrealized proposal more so than actual money invested at that point.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez-
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, you know, the, the construction trades in the community is a, is a decent component of your economic activity. When you think about electricians, plumbers, carpenters during the actual construction, it's a pretty substantial amount, let alone the effect when new properties come online, they need to be furnished and, and kind of that ripple effect. And I think most economists would say that housing construction activity is a substantive part of your local economic activity. And so our concern is just for the, the relatively minor savings in water to kind of upset a pretty substantial part of your commercial activity in town. Might be not the wise way to go.
Great. Well, I'm glad we're focusing on the, the trades and the working class of the community because when I see on the community, I think it does deserve to be drilled down a little more. No pun intended. The, the impact, I think, is felt most when you have up and down trends, when you're building a bunch and then you have to let people go because there's no more building. And seeing this huge bump in the pipe now with, with over 1,000 units, and it sounds like staff is saying, we're looking at maybe half of those actually being built. So these are folks who we're trying to build potentially workforce housing for. And the AUD, from all the studies that the city's done so far, and from the people who've come to talk about these projects, this is upper-income housing. So it's not going to actually provide housing for, for the people that we're talking about here, the workforce. So it's almost a double whammy. If we're going to invite them into work, not provide them housing, actually provide more affluent housing, and then not have anywhere for them to live, it's going to create more bottlenecks on the freeway, more traffic impacts. So the economic impacts really aren't on the community. It's on, on developers who, if we had...
Getting nudges that we're still in question mode and not comment mode yet.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask a more refined question. So the community is really, if there was a pause on building, it would impact the community who are in the building process. But anyone you were talking about, potentially someone who's thinking about building, there wouldn't be an impact, or at least not as much of an impact, on someone who's, hasn't pulled permits or hasn't bought the property. I just want to make sure it's clear when we use a vague term like "community," which community we're talking about.
Well, and Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, if you put a pause on projects that are in the process, that will give you zero water savings to hit the shortfall for next summer.
Right. And I'm only talking about things that aren't, aren't in the pipeline. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Well, I, I guess the focus of our presentation is we've got a water shortage next summer that we're trying to address. And so we're giving you a variety of options and recommendations about how to address that impact. And I think the point of this development discussion is that you could stop projects in their tracks that are under construction, and that will get you a very modest 27 acre feet, you know.
You haven't heard anyone talking about that?
So then to stop projects that are in the pipeline or even being considered, there's no physical way they would be using water by next summer during the shortfall. So I don't think, from a water conservation standpoint, talking about projects that are still in the planning stages, you're going to get any water savings whatsoever by making a policy decision on that.
Right. And I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about 2018 and 19 and the decisions we're going to be forced to make because a lot of what I've heard is dealing with a lot of very fragile components of our water supply and a lot of predictions regarding demand. And so that's why I just really want to hone in on, on this because it seems like a lot of time and effort was put into this.
Wait, can we hone in after public comment and, and for, for comments? And so, because we have to give direction to council.
Sounds good.
So unless you have a specific question, then let's, okay, let's, let's, because I know you have a couple of slides left, and we want to get to public comment. Because we do need to have the discussion, but at that time. Thanks.
So the schedule. Adoption of turf grass watering, we anticipate would be as, as early as November 2016. We're pushing that timeline to maximize our savings. We believe the winter actually gives us the ability to have a smooth transition. Even with the rainfall that we've seen in past years, most lawns will survive the winter without irrigation. And it really puts us in a position to achieve the full implementation in the 2017 irrigation season, which we can't miss a beat on at this point. It puts the city in the best possible position going into year six. And, and obviously, it can be adjusted. If we need, if we get rainfall this winter, then it improves our situation. We obviously can revisit this any Tuesday to, to roll it back. Enforcement, we're looking for feedback on enforcement as well. Turf grass restriction would require enforcement, I think, to be successful. We're looking at staff patrolling during key outdoor watering times, typically like midnight to 7:00 a.m. We would have folks out patrolling. The violation process would be very similar, and it's already been, you know, documented in the municipal code. It would be a warning, and I start off emphasizing this because this, we have not moved past the first offense so far with our community because typically, most people are very thankful to find out that, oh, I had a leaky line that was in the middle of the night, it's going into the street. Big emphasis on education here, and it will continue to be. But then, of course, we do have subsequent fines that ratchet up our concerns and need to restrict. There will be financial impacts and revenue loss from this, but we believe at this time the focus on preserving water supply is much more important. We are exploring use of reserves. Right now, we have very preliminary numbers that show that moving from 35% conservation to 40% conservation is approximately a $3.2 million revenue loss. So if we're implementing this in January, it would be a half, half of a year or 1.6 million. And so a drought impact fee is what many of our neighboring water agencies have done to kind of address these fluctuations. But I think our preference is to try and figure out how we can work with our existing rates and, and reserves and potentially deal with, with the loss of revenue that way rather than this drought impact fee. So we'll be looking for any feedback you might have on, on that. Other water-saving measures that we are exploring, rationing, which Montecito has done, it's basically establishing a budget for every customer. We anticipate, given the size of our community, 12 months to develop this, but we are working on this now to try and better understand the schedule for that. I think internally, there's a desire to try and have something for spring, should the council or we feel that rationing would be more effective. Other water use restrictions, we're here to listen. I'm constantly listening to the community. I get lots of phone calls. But I think staying focused on what we're looking to, to save, which is 800 acre feet, we're kind of running out of options to save volumes of water in that side, that timeframe. The other part is our rebates program. I imagine it's been very successful. Many members in this community have taken advantage of it, and it's great. And we are, right now, proposing that we continue moving forward with rebates, and we may have to discuss where that money's going to come from. But I think this is a great opportunity, if people are letting their lawns go, to replace them with something that's more appropriate for this climate. And that could be some permanent savings going forward. The challenge with that is typically when you replace grass with even natives, it does require watering. But I think, to the extent that our rebates are available, I, I still think this is the right direction to go. And so, of course, we're looking for some feedback on that as well. So in summary, turf grass watering restrictions, we're looking for impact or input and discussion, potential exemptions, your concerns about enforcement, development restrictions, drought impact fee, and then, of course, other water-saving measures, rationing, other water use restrictions, and rebates.
That all? I mean, I do have one question, and I meant to ask you before today, so if you don't have the answer, something after today would be great. The Senate actually has passed some legislation, and it's going through process, believe it or not, something happening, about water and, and water supply and capital projects and funding. And if there's, if there's, if you have an update on that, I think there was a Senate passage, it's in the House, they're looking at some items. But it also might be good for our community if there's something in particular to write to our federal representatives about those items. And I see Ms. Bjork coming up. But that might be something moving forward. I know we've talked offline a little bit about what can we do in terms of legislation that's moving forward. But if it relates to helping reduce rates in the long term, or, I don't think you can pass a federal bill to bring water and make it rain, but, you know, there are other items here. I don't know if you have any updates or comments on, on that.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we, we are actively tracking, tracking that. We do have a meeting with Feinstein's office on Monday to, to keep track of this. Internally, it sounds like they're, they're not optimistic it will pass. And having read through some of the language, it's, it's going to be difficult to get funding, I think, through, through this corridor. Certainly, we're going to continue to track this and see what, what comes of it. But it doesn't, it certainly doesn't open the door wide open for us on certainly getting funding. One of the other things that we are discussing is the potential to declare Kachuma a disaster because it's really what, you know, it's looking like and how that may free up both state and federal funds to, to assist with offsetting some of the costs of this drought.
Great. Thank you. And I'm sure, once we get more information, we'll be able to distribute that out to the community. Oh, we have a bunch of lights on. Ms. Mario. And then we'll go to public comment after questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Hagmark, thanks so much. I mean, I think, what terrible news this all has been. But a drought impact fee, you're saying you, your, your reports seem to say we want to implement it, but then in your presentation, you were talking about maybe addressing the issue through rates and, and reserves. But so, so it would be a fee added to every unit of water, no matter what?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, I apologize. I meant to try and get all this information out here just to kind of get, get the council and the public thinking about it. And so the drought impact fee, just to give a little more detail, is, yeah, it is a fixed cost per unit for all water used that would be tacked on to make up that deficit that we're talking about. Galita has done it, Ventura has it. And so it is a tool that's out there. It is challenging because it doesn't, it doesn't ramp up. It's just a flat across the board for everybody, and no matter how many units you use. And so it's, it's not necessarily the, the greatest tool, but in an emergency, and we're, you know, if, if, if the financial impacts were larger or our reserves were in worse shape, I might think that that would be a good tool mid-year. But internally, we think we can, we can make it to, to the next fiscal year in which we can address it in the rates.
Well, I, I will ask Mr. Kalan if he thinks, obviously, it would have to pass the 218 test. But what, I would ask you now, what would be the 50 cents? What, do you have a, a number in your mind? 15 cents? I, I'm, a dollar? What, what's your thought on the number?
I don't have, I know Galita's is about a dollar, so I, I don't have a, a good estimate of what ours would be at this point. We haven't really dug into that yet.
Okay, okay. So you need to study what, what that fee would be?
If the council was interested, yes, we would, we would pursue studying that.
And would you have to hire a consultant and go through that whole process?
Probably, yes, because it's pretty complicated.
Okay. And then, if I could ask Madam Mayor of our city attorney on the Prop 218 question?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, there are two ways to do it. One is a cost-based approach, which would try and analyze the additional costs related to drought services, and that would be 218. The other is to treat it as a penalty. And the difficulty, we discussed this in 2014, if I remember correctly, that the difficulty with the penalty is that it kind of pushes you towards establishing quantitative limits on water use, which the, the council has not done, meaning, say, a per capita limitation or a per household limitation on the amount of water available. That would not be a 218 process, but it would have the administrative disadvantage of, again, having to try and quantify how much water people would be entitled to.
So, Madam Mayor, so that would be more like rationing, then? That would be in the realm of, sort of, okay. And then I did want to ask, so in, in terms of the development restrictions, one of the things I've heard, and I'll ask you the question, that new development is required to be more, the, the plumbing and the building itself is more water-conservative. Is that, is that true?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, that is true. And in terms of that number that I presented, 179 acre feet per year for all new development that could potentially come online, that's net new water. And so part of that number is the factor of, you know, in the city of Santa Barbara, we're largely built out. So it's a lot of redevelopment of existing parcels that have an existing water demand. And so that's netted out of that 179. And that is because whether it's upgrading of plumbing fixtures or we have strict water conservation standards for landscaping, too. So it's also the new landscape plans are highly drought tolerant.
So there's a possibility that the house I live in right now is not as water-conservative as a new one that might come online or other people's homes that are already there. So when we, and it's such a serious question, whether to put a building moratorium out there, that, that I think there's some subtleties that, that we do need to address, right? So there's houses out there right now, households that are not, that won't be as conservative as new development. Okay. And then I, I am concerned about enforcement. I, you, you get a lot of calls, you say, Mr. Hagmark, and I, I have neighbors who call in whenever somebody's, you know, there's water running down. So do you think that enforcement would be a combination of a city staff person and, and nosy neighbors who are going to make phone calls and, and call it in?
Yes, yes. We're just trying to, to make it as, or, how do I want to put it? As structured as possible. We have, you can go onto our website now, and you can actually submit, hey, I saw water running down the street. You can submit a picture, and we will follow up on those. Obviously, a lot of people call, and we follow up on those. But I, I think we just can't leave it to neighbors tattling on neighbors when we talk about this type of turf grass restriction. I think we actually need to have some, some enforcement out in the field, patrolling and doing that. I think it's just a better position to be in rather than...
And Madam Mayor, just one last question. Again, back to development, there's been an assertion up here that all the AUD units are affluent. That's not exactly true, right? The, it's an experiment, things are being built, and the cost has not really been figured out yet. So I, I think we need to be careful about criticizing this dense housing program without having all the facts. Is that right, Ms. Brook? We're coming back October 27th to discuss it with the Planning Commission?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, that's correct. In terms of the average unit size density program, we'll be discussing that at the joint meeting of City Council and Planning Commission on October 27th. And I believe I'm coming to your council just two days before that for an update for you in advance of that meeting as well, for the latest development statistics for the AUD program.
And we would appreciate working with facts at that point. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Just to make sure I understand it, so the most recent monthly water savings is the month of August, and that's 42%. And the goal we're shooting for with this extra effort is to get to a 40% for the whole next year to next summer. Okay. It seems like, this, this information is really helpful, and this is a big decision. And it seems like the, the impetus for this traces back to the, the water release for the downstream water users that happened very recently that overshot what our estimate was. Can you help explain that, why that occurred and was more than what we had anticipated? Because it, it seems like the net amount of water that we're trying to get back is what went downstream in that release.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, it, the challenge that we're facing is that it isn't that it, it changed the game, it just took away any type of buffer, that kind of contingency that we've been talking about. The water that they released, they relied on a, an old 1973 state water rights order that they had never exercised before, which entitled them to basically negative credit, negative release. So basically, this ability to release water that didn't necessarily was a... So basically, this ability to release water that didn't necessarily, wasn't in their accounts. The way that it should pencil out is a long-term loan that should be paid off, hopefully sometime next summer, in the form of inflow into the reservoir that should reduce this negative credit. And I think the frustration, we looked at this from many different perspectives, obviously when we found out in mid-August that they were doing this, but it was the lack of communication that was really the most troubling about this, because we've been meeting on a monthly basis to share our water supply planning, because we are talking about such few molecules left in the lake. And to have this significant, an unexpected event happen, the Bureau being aware of this issue as well, and not feeling like they needed to share that, that was really the breakdown in this. We felt, when we looked at this, it appears, whether right or wrong, that it was legal to do this. It was really how they went about doing this that I think was most troubling, given our water supply situation and how much we are relying on Kachuma.
Well, clearly, we've been trying to thread the needle and get through this, and we've been meeting regularly and had a plan to get there. And now, we're going to have to do something differently to react to that fact. So the net that we lost, just the city, is in the 800 acre foot amount, right? Because the total's about 2,000 for all the South Coast users, and our share is about 800 acre foot a year of that.
The city has not lost any of its water rights.
I'm not talking about water rights. I'm talking about water that went downstream, that we had originally planned was going to be in the lake that would be available to us. There was an additional 2,000 acre feet released through the dam downstream recently, right?
Right, and it wasn't water we believed belonged to us, but we saw it as this buffer should ourselves, but primarily, what I was worried about, is any of our neighbors have an issue. So, you know, for example, and I don't mean to pick on Carpandria, they have very, they have two wells in Carpandria primarily that supply a lot of their groundwater. It doesn't take much for, as we saw over the last few years, for you to have issues with those wells. They could lose one of those wells. And what I was kind of envisioning, that minimum pool, they had done prudent planning, they have, you know, backup plans in place, but in the event they lost that well, they have, in my mind, the minimum pool that they could do a loan from while they imported water to make up for it. Now, we're in the position where, if that happens, they would have to take our water to make up for that loss. And that's where I think that we need to start building up that contingency, not only for ourselves, in case something doesn't come through, but what happens if our neighbors or somebody else? I mean, I just, the margins now are so tight, that that's why I feel like we need to up the ante. And I expect our neighbors will be doing something soon as well.
Okay. One advantage of extending the conveyance all the way to the dam is that there's no evaporation loss of the system. So that's expensive, but it actually kind of provides more certainty on to actually how much water we get through that system, right?
It does. It removes the ability for us to store water, and that's kind of the balancing act. You're absolutely right. It would reduce that, the evaporation. But what we're facing here, and the biggest challenge, is meeting those peak demands. If this community used what they used in January and February for the whole year, we'd have no problems. But we literally double our water usage in the summer, and it's meeting those peak demands that we have challenges with, and we can't import enough water, that having that buffer and Kachuma to build it up and then be able to deliver it all in the summer is really kind of critical. So we're still trying to figure out exactly how that would work. We envision, hopefully, having a space around our barge where we can store some water, potentially, in 2018, along with bringing in imported water without, minimizing evap.
Okay. And you mentioned that you're worried, or concerned, or are closely watching the groundwater, seawater intrusion into the groundwater basin. Are we pumping more water now than we did at the peak of the last drought?
I believe we've stepped over that threshold of how much we've extracted. It's, we have not seen the chloride concentration kick up, which is kind of suspicious, but we're going to up our monitoring so we don't get surprised by, because we have been doing it on a quarterly basis, and we feel at this point, we need to be doing that more frequently. And so, we're working with USGS to try and figure out how we can get that data more frequently and be able to adapt, because certainly, the last thing we want to do is destroy this groundwater basin with seawater.
So how does that work? If you detect chloride in a particular well, then you slow down in terms of what you're pumping out of that particular well? How does that evolve over time? What's the strategy for that?
So our strategy is, we have what's called Sentinel Wells. They're basically the canary that's, we have between the beach and our wells, and we basically have several of them, and we're constantly testing that water quality. And so, we do have a very well-developed model. So depending on the concentrations that we see at various wells, we'll take that data, plug it into our model, and look at what would be the best pumping regime. It may say, oh, you need to rest this well. If you rest this well for three months, this is how it would change the seawater intrusion barrier. And so, that's kind of the data that we're working with and planning to kind of really surgically be operating our wells when we start seeing the increase in chlorides.
And you feel pretty confident about that program, in terms of how that ramps down and how it fits into the long-term water supply?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have exceptionally large water users? You know, I read in newspapers around the state that there are communities where people are outrageously consuming water, and that that, I don't have any idea if that's a problem here, or if that's a large amount of water. Are there any customers that are, you know, using hundreds of acre feet of water a year kind of thing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, because of our parcel sizes here in Santa Barbara, I wouldn't say we have egregious water users. We have done outreach to our top 100 highest single-family residential customers, and we've had great response with them, working one-on-one with our landscape rebate programs, irrigation evaluations, et cetera. So we've had a great response from those customers, but I wouldn't classify us in the same areas statewide as other agencies that have some of these ones that you've been seeing in the newspaper.
Okay, that's really helpful. And then, how did you calculate the turf savings? When you came up with that broad range? Because, you know, all of us walk around the neighborhoods, and I do it regularly, I'm looking at front yards, and, you know, I'm trying to calculate in my head, what percentage of people have let their lawns go? It looks to me like it's 70% or so in the front yard, but I bet there's a lot more green grass in backyards. But I have no idea. I don't have a drone, I'm not looking over people's fences. How do you do, how would you figure that out?
Again, that's why we do have a range, because it is hard to determine. It's based on average water usage pre-drought, and then also based on our own perspective of what we've seen over the past couple of years, and how people have reduced their water use. But again, similar to you, we are mostly seeing the front yards that are lawn that have been let go, and that's why there's such a low, a wide range. So we do feel confident about the floor being 500, and so, most likely somewhere within there, as Joshua was saying, perhaps about 1,000 acre feet is a comfortable amount.
And is there a way for you to calculate how much money it would take in an incentivized program to get that 500 acre feet? You know, by increasing the amount of money that we offer for turf replacement rebates? Maybe looking back historically at how successful that's been? What would it take to do a similar thing as to what we're proposing with the mandatory reduction?
So up till now, we've had a voluntary rebate program, so that depends on customer investment in their landscape. And the amount that we offer, the maximum of 1,000, is actually based on our avoided cost of water. So it's not necessarily a target savings that we're achieving, it's based on the investment that the city puts into these new landscapes, and making sure that that is worth more than going out and buying additional supplies. So that's how we come to that targeted amount. We have looked at increasing the participation of this rebate, which we have seen go off the charts in the past few years, which is why we have allocated more funds to the rebate program, so it can continue, and so it can meet demand, because we are even today going out and doing a lot of pre-inspections for the program.
But is there, do you know other communities that have more advantageous incentive program, more dollars per square foot, that gets, you know, that much more demand? Trying to think of alternatives to the ban. What else could we do? Could we throw more money at this and have people voluntarily choose to do this? And could you ever get to 500 acre feet through that kind of an incentive program, as opposed to a...
Not quickly, and that's the issue with the rebate programs and with conservation, is you can't get a knee-jerk water savings. Unfortunately, that is, that's what comes with regulation, because as the savings accumulate, that's when we could reach about 500 acre feet, but that would probably be many years from now. What we're seeing roughly is about 130 acre feet per year, based on this current drought level, but 10 years from now, that's going to be 300 acre feet per year that we have accumulated. So it's very hard to get a giant bucket of water very quickly with voluntary measures, especially since, even though these are permanent landscape changes, they do need additional water to establish the landscape, and that's something that we take into consideration with the savings numbers.
Well, if you did it in a way, I mean, is there any, and you don't need to answer this right off the top of your head, because we're just throwing stuff out. But I guess what I would ask you to look at really carefully is, what would it do, what would you take to say to somebody, you're watering your lawn now, here's $1,000 to stop watering your lawn, and be in a program that you're going to replace your turf in the long run? And maybe something like that would incentivize people to say, okay, I'm ready to do that now, whereas I wasn't before. And what I'm curious about is, like, how much would that take? And what, how many homes would have to do that to get 500 acre feet savings immediately? And so, just, I don't expect you to know that right off the top of your head. Then...
Councilmember Hart, real quick.
Yes.
In 2014, I think you asked this wonderful question, and we did explore it, and we can bring back that information, but I think at the time, we were asking, what would it take to get the savings? And I think we threw out, what if we spent $3 million on water conservation efforts and rebates? What would that get us in savings? And so, we can bring back some of that information. I want to say that our model, and this is all based on this water conservation model that we have, that says, okay, if you do these programs, here's how much money you can save, how much water, how much water you can save. I want to say currently, our model has the investment that people are making in changing their landscaping, changes in dishwashers, all these things that people are doing, is generating approximately 130 acre feet of savings every year. And that's already occurring, and so...
And that's taken years to develop.
Right. And what we're asking is, what can we do to make that more? And so, we can bring that information back in October, because this is an iterative process, and we can continue to develop that.
Okay. And then, I think the last thing I was curious about is, is there a strategy for another component of D cell, to deliver that, you know, by next summer? I guess they come in 1,200 acre foot, that would be kind of the right size. Is there, have you had any conversations with the operator about the possibility of pulling that off on this timeframe?
We are currently talking internally about at least being ready this spring to talk about expansion. We do feel like we have adequate water to get us out to 2019, in particular with this, with a 40% conservation. So we'll be weighing that, I think we talked about approximately a $45 million price tag for expansion of the D cell plant to, versus, you know, hopefully some rainfall this winter that will buy us another year. And I think that's... So, yeah, so one of the big costs that we were wrestling with before is the distribution issues. We can, within a year, we can have our contractor expand the D cell plant, but it's distributing that water in the system that becomes really complicated. Right now, we're able to pretty much absorb the 3,125 acre feet, but as we contemplate a potentially 7,500 acre foot facility, that is a lot of water in January and February to have in the low part of your city. And so, you have to, we need to move it out of the low zone, and that infrastructure there is what we're currently trying, contemplating. And it's difficult, because ideally, we want to get that water back up to Cater, our source of our water, because from there, we can distribute it anywhere. And so, certainly, the cost of that pipeline and trying to expedite that are challenging, and that's what we're exploring now, and we hope to have a lot of those questions answered by late winter, so that we can have a meaningful discussion about what expansion means and how long we anticipate it would take if we pulled the trigger.
Well, I guess I just ask, you know, there's a big difference between 3 and 7, and 3 and 42. And so, you know, I'm trying to get at the sensitivity of that. When is it critical to have that distribution through Cater? I totally understand how it would be with the bigger, you know, doubling the capacity of the plant, but I don't understand the sensitivity of it at 1,000 acre foot.
So just to give you a context to it, at 3125, in January and February, we have to idle our wells in the downtown area because we have abundance of water. So it's already right at that borderline. So what we're saying is basically, any additional D cell production really requires the ability to move it out of the low zone.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse, and then we'll go to public comment.
I'll be brief. Mr. Hart, actually, you covered a lot of my questions for me. Mr. Hagmark, in the bypass scenario, has there been a cost assigned to that, if you even looked, that's been looked into yet? If that becomes a possibility or necessity if the drought continues?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, there is a number, a rough number, and I don't recall it offhand. I believe it's somewhere in the $2 million range, is what I think it's out there.
Okay. And my understanding is, with the recycled, the water, once we're up to full capacity, is there enough demand to require all that capacity currently? Or is that a matter of the delivery system that we have in place? So in other words, can we produce more than we actually have need for, when the thing is up and running the way it should be doing?
In the, basically, our winter months, we will be able to utilize it, but we're going to be, you know, moving our water around, basically cutting back on well production to try and...
No, the clean water, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're currently meeting the demands of our recycled water system, which is, our customers have been able to reduce their usage, and we've been able to get...
Say that one more time.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse.
Yes, we are connected.
The recycled water plant, when we designed and sized that, the reconstruction of that plant, we looked at both our current demands, as well as the reasonably anticipated demands for future connections, and we sized the plant to meet those needs. So when we have the plant running at full capacity, we will have a little bit of extra water, because not all of the future demands have yet been developed, and because we sized it conservatively to meet those demands. So there is a little bit of extra capacity there when we have it up to full capacity.
This is, I understand, and some of the communities are like the purple tanker truck system, where they can go and do things like street trees and things like that, that may be using potable water otherwise, that we could supplement and...
That's correct, and we might have some opportunities there. Unfortunately, the rules around use of recycled water are rather onerous in terms of posting and backflow prevention, and so we're looking at those issues, because we'd like to be as responsive, especially to our permanent landscape as possible.
Okay. And I promised the last question. Mr. Hagmark, in the active enforcement option that you talked about, where staff would actually be doing some of the enforcement, or the patrol work, as it were, is that going to require extra staff? Or is that going to be with additional staff reassigned?
We're working on that, and that's, we're looking for any feedback on that, but we were anticipating the use of hourly's, is what we were thinking, to start off with. And again, these folks wouldn't be actually engaging with customers, they would be driving around and documenting it, and then we would have full-time staff who would be following up with the customers to let them know that, hey, we, you know, we have pictures of water, your sprinklers going on on your turf, and we need you to change your behavior. So that's kind of what we're envisioning, kind of a soft start to it. Again, it could rain, that would be wonderful, and not need a need for it, but we think we just can't wait.
I was encouraged to hear the no predictions, because they've been dead wrong so far, so we're in there this year. Thank you.
Consistency, right?
Okay. We're going to go to public comment. We'll start with Lindsay Baker, to be followed by Phil Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilpersons. I'm Lindsay Baker, speaking for myself today. Mr. Hagmark used the word scary. I observed the Water Commission meeting last week, and I left that meeting feeling very scared. That was the word that I used after they made their presentation. From the onset of this drought, the City Council has been discussing the water issue and trying to balance economic issues. They've talked about the fact that swimming pools are a small amount of water, fountains are a small amount of water, new development is a small amount of water. are a small amount of water, new development is a small amount of water. A penny saved is a penny earned. A drop of water saved is a drop to drink. I feel that survival and water has an overriding issue over economic concerns. We are beyond living within our resources, as was demonstrated by Mr. Hagemark's presentation today. At this point, the community members need to have their needs considered, and morale must be an issue that the City Council considers going forward. Thank you.
Phil Walker, be followed by Tom Williams.
Good to see a sense of humor up here. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, once again, having worked through the last drought go around, and I always wondered, what was the economic impact? And I brought that before, I think, Mayor Lodge, when she was on council, the mayor, and Mayor Marty Bloom. And I never really got a good definition of what is the economic effect of a drought. But I'm seeing it, I'm seeing neighbors here in Goleta, whatever, they just throw up their hands and they just let their yards go too. And unfortunately, if you let your front yard go, it eventually deteriorates, deteriorates, and you just have desiccated dirt and it blows. And we're going to get some sand out of winds this year. I think it's a pretty, pretty proven given. And then you have the trees, you know, the street trees will, their feeder roots will get into the front yard, and you've seen the effects of that on Annapamooze Street. And having worked in the landscape industry for the best, Griffin Tree and Landscape in the early 70s, Pepper Tree and Encina Lodge too, this area is economically benefited to the plus, plus, plus by the beauty of the landscape and the tree canopy. And you don't want to see it be just thrown to the wayside. And Ms. Bjork brought up the point that there are such onerous rules for having fill points where customers can fill up with 50 gallon barrels or 2,000 gallon tanker truck. Maybe some input could be given to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Regional State Water Resources Control Board about a state of emergency and backing off on the onerous rules that the public has to deal with. Thank you very much.
Tom Williams, be followed by Sheila Lodge.
Madam Mayor, City Councilpersons, what I'm talking about may seem trivial compared to the bad stuff we've been presented with, but I think it's important. I've been following on Channel 18 for several years, your discussion about the ongoing and increasing water shortage. And it's obvious that we got a problem. You're paying more for less water. Eh, got to do that, go ahead. And you've asked us to cut back over time, and many of us have done something. For instance, you know, I live on the mesa in a little house, a little tract, it's 60 by 100 lot, got a house, 1,400 square foot house on it with a driveway. So you can figure out, I don't have much room. I can't put in a ton of water using shrubbery or what have you, but I can do something. So when we first started, south side of the house, hot, cut out the flower bed, put rocking down, must have done something, but I really don't know how much. Later on, tune in Channel 17, you, I think most of you know Ernie Salomon. If you know Ernie Salomon, you know you don't want to talk about turf in his presence because it sets him off. I've known Ernie for 50 years. I watched him. So in 2014, I let go of my backyard, not very big, but I let go of it. How much water it saved? Eh, I don't know. I think it went down, but I don't really know. Last year, Ernie's still talking about it, I let go of my front yard, like a lot of people have done, you walk around the neighborhood. Must have done something, but again, don't know how much. No watering, no washing off your driveway, no watering your parkway, so on and so on and so on. And that's always been enough because Mr. Hagemark says, this cumulative, we're all meeting the goal. So the fact that I didn't know, and a lot of other people didn't know.
You need to wind up, please.
Exactly how much water they're saving, it looked to be irrelevant because as a city, we're meeting the goal. But now, it's gotten more critical, and we're talking about going from a cumulative 36% to a 40%.
Thank you.
So all of a sudden, I'm saying, where do I stand? Where does everybody else stand in relation to 40%?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's part.
One last thing.
What I would just suggest to answer your questions, they can certainly look at your water supply and see how you did in the last few years. But you do need to wrap up. You're way beyond your two minutes.
Okay, a wrap up. In order to get to, in order for us to know whether we're making the 40%, we have to know what the start number was.
Right, thank you very much.
I stopped downstairs. You know, but it took the lady at least five minutes to pull up my 1913 bill.
Okay.
Put it on the bill.
Mr. Williams, your time is way up. So we got, we got the point, but that's it. But that's good. We have, you have your, your bills, and you can look back at your history and see how you did and see where to go. Okay. Ms. Lodge, then Anna Marie Gott, and then the final speaker will be Art Ludwig.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sheila Lodge. In a recent conversation with Water Department's Division Staff, I said I thought it was time for a moratorium. I was told that during, well, we had one during the previous drought, and this drought is worse. It was pointed out that water use per person, as you heard earlier, is expected to go down with new water efficiencies. However, more people equals more water use, and it's cumulative and ongoing. The big problem is that water supply is going down. We may be experiencing the beginning of a permanent change in Santa Barbara's rainfall pattern. July was the hottest month of the year, the hottest month ever around the globe. It was the 15th consecutive month of record-breaking heat. As you heard, debris from the Wraith Fire is expected to ultimately reduce Gibraltar's capacity by 500 acre feet. The fire also burned into Kachuma's watershed, and there may be some reduced capacity as a result of that there. The order, the draft order from the state about the trout requires five times as much water as has been required before for the fish. Less water will be available for people and for plants, and the ability to stockpile water for future years will also be reduced as a result. It seems to me that the only responsible way for the city to go is to go with a worst-case scenario. If the drought ends, great. If it doesn't, with lesser demand, the city is better able to provide the water necessary to keep our community alive. I urge you to adopt a ban on lawn watering and building moratorium for any new water use. The lead water district stopped making new water allocations two years ago, Montecito three years ago. It's time for Santa Barbara. You can't just look at next year. This is ongoing, and there will be new projects coming along, not just the ones that are in the pipeline now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am representing not just myself, but also Allied Neighborhoods Association. We submitted a letter to you, and I've also just passed it out to you. So putting on my resident hat first, I just have some big questions about how this conservation is actually going to be implemented. For instance, do you know what percentage of your high water users have not changed their habits over the last few years? Or they have changed very little? Do you actually know what percentage of, of users actually have, high water users actually have ag meters? And is, are those ag meters in residential areas actually being used for maybe food production, or is it for landscaping? And shouldn't something be done in terms of looking at that? Typically, your high volume, high volume water users are going to represent 20% of the, of the population, but actually consume probably about 80% of the water. So have, have there been any analysis to figure out through the data who you should actually target to reduce water instead of just making a blanket statement that it's just going to be turf? You can only get so many people to actually stop watering their front and backyards, and there's going to always be some that will fail to make any concessions whatsoever with regards to their own water use. So in terms of allied, we actually presented a letter to you, and we presented a letter in July to the Planning Commission. And in that, we wrote that in this historic drought, in this historic drought conditions, many of the community have already raised the question of why the city is allowed new construction. Over and over through different stages, residents and the community have asked to cut back and conserve more again and again. Meanwhile, we are in the midst of a huge construction boom.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
We got, we have your letter.
Okay.
We have your letter. Thanks. Mr. Ludwig.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Art Ludwig, Water Consultant. I've done some work for the city in the past. I'm currently speaking today as a citizen. As a city water customer, I appreciate having such a professional and diligent staff turning over every stone looking for more water. I support the proposed watering ban. To get some perspective on it, I spoke with Dan Carney this morning. He's the Water Conservation Director for Marin County. In 1977, Marin County had a 60% water reduction, and the conservation ethic and patterns that they developed during that time have persisted. Ornamental lawns, they stopped watering them completely, and they never really started again. That's no longer part of the culture in Marin County. They don't have a lawn replacement program in Marin because there aren't any more lawns to replace. It's been a huge water savings for them. Meanwhile, in Santa Barbara, we've applied approximately 14,000 acre feet of water to turf since the drought began. It's about the biggest single use of water, and we've basically literally dried up our water supply with lawns. Timing is really important. If we'd moved beyond lawns in 2011 and reduced turf watering by half at that time, counting evaporation conservatively and everything else, we'd have about 5,400 acre feet still in Kachuma right now. Depending on how you count it, that's somewhere between 10 and many tens of millions of dollars worth of water that we wouldn't have to buy. In a post-lawn Santa Barbara, there'd be better air quality. Lawn mowers produce 5% of total emissions in the U.S., fewer emergency room visits. It's about 100,000 emergency room visits a year for amputations, including my mom's toe. Less gas spilled, less noise pollution, quite a bit lower climate impact. Because of the way our water supply is structured, that marginal water use that we wouldn't be using would come out of our highest carbon water supply, which is about 60 times more carbon than our lowest. And it would affect a general shift in the direction of sustainable culture. If those lawns were replaced with rainwater infiltration basins, that would have the effect of adding thousands of acre feet a year to our water supply, which could help to water, establish the water conservative landscape.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So it's to the council. I'm just going to start with one question about the enforcement of a potential lawn watering ban and people driving around looking for water. Is that all they would be doing? Can we have other people do other things while, I mean, if, if we're really going to implement this, it seems like a lot of time and money spent on, understandably, with hourly's to basically go patrolling around the city. And I know that's, we've, we've refrained from going down that path up to this point. I guess my question would be, if we were to go down that path, are there other things either in this department or others? I don't know, look for mattresses on the side of the road and call it into Marburg or graffiti or, you know, things like that, that we could be a little more efficient with that time spent? And I don't know if that's been talked about or what, but I'll put that out there if we're going to go down that path. But it just seems like a person driving around in a hopefully gas-free or energy-free emissions vehicle or something, spending all the time looking for people violating a ban, there's other more efficient ways to do that, or somehow combine some other activities or something.
Definitely appreciate that, this kind of feedback we're looking for. The challenge that we have is that the irrigation is typically at night when we don't have a lot of staff onboard, and that's, that's, that's some of the challenge. But they would be Public Works employees, so of course, we could be looking for, for other things and trying to maximize them. We've even talked about putting potentially people who are on restricted work, maybe they could be the ones driving around if since they're injured or, you know, getting them back to work and getting them doing something. So exploring all kinds of different options, and we'll add finding alternative vehicles as well to that list.
Okay. All right. Now we just have some lights on. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so my, my turn to mic is it'll be a combination of questions and comments as well as, and then trying to separate them into restricting demand and then increasing supply. Of course, be no surprise to any, to my colleagues that I would re-raise my, my advocacy for a growth management ordinance. This would, I think, is a, is a good compromise in that it would allow the entitlement processes to move forward, but would restrict how the demand comes, unfolds. I also am tipping toward Ms. Lodge's recommendation for a moratorium. I just think we're, there's going to be, and I know Mr. Hart has raised this in the past, optics versus, versus what's going to make an actual result. But there's a time when optics start to be important. One of the, one of our commenters today was speaking about morale. So that's, it's obviously going to be part of what we are managing is morale. So those are a couple of, of demand control pieces. On the rebate program, I, I certainly support the continuation and of the, and even expansion of the rebate programs. I continue to see at one facility which I go to regularly where the, there's, there are no wireless, waterless, wireless, waterless urinals. And I just, I, it kind of blows my mind that that's not, that they're not there. And, but so that's, again, in terms of controlling demand, those are pieces that I do support. I do support the implementation of the drought impact fee sooner than later. We were already dipping into our reserves in a big way for rates today. Our costs are skyrocketing, so I'm, I'm a sooner-than-later advocate on the, on the drought impact fee. Now then, to bits and pieces of, of supply, our reclaim system. Is there a way to, I know that we're still looking, we have an extra million gallons a day that we're trying to get going, that we designed for, that we're still not there on, but we're, we're working on. Is any of that extra supply, is it possible to use that to dump into Mission Creek at Oak Park or wherever is our northernmost place in order to recharge our groundwater? I see Ms. Bjork shaking her head. Too bad. That's how it should be used. Another piece is our wells, both the, I know I've been lobbying with Mr. Hagmark on the Foothill Basin. I think there's, there's still a decent amount of water in there, and I worry that we're, and, and I really appreciate his comments about using up the margin of error. And that's, we're just, and the wells are our key piece for water that's this side of the mountain that, that, and as we, we are using those up, using our wells so heavily now, I'm concerned that earthquake, whatever. I'm concerned that earthquake, whatever bad thing happens, that our wells are not, we've, we have used up that supply. We've done a great job over the last 20 years to 30 years in rejuvenating our groundwater basin. And the Foothill Basin in particular is safe from saltwater incursion. And again, I've been lobbying with Mr. Hagmark to develop the mother of all wells there that will be at least one supply, increase in supply going forward. The Vaie Verde well, what's it going to cost? What would it cost to treat that water and make that potable? I think we should at least have a number on that. Is it $1 million capital cost? I know it's not potable now, but it's a supply, and we should know whether it's feasible, what the cost would be to make that potable. On the turf patrolling system, it would, aerial photographs have to be, and UCSB even with the, one of the national centers of remote sensing, somehow we need, we ought to be able to use aerial photography or remote sensing in some way to understand how much, how much turf we actually have out there and work with that to control turf, turf I think those are my comments. I support the turf ban, turf watering ban. And certainly what I'm witnessing and participating in at the regional level is that all the bad things you're hearing unfortunately are all true, and that we just, we do, this is a time to buckle, buckle things down yet another notch. And finally, Madam Mayor, I want to recognize Bill Ferguson, who's here, who's one of our ace-in-the-hole helpers, teammates, former quote-unquote retired, but is just, we have the brains and the commitment to keep our system going. And thank you, Bill, for your work.
Just when you thought you were out, they pulled you back in.
And not that I'm ignoring the rest of the team. I know, I just, I have great affection for you and admiration for your work.
Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you. So you could probably tell by the tenor of some of my questions and the questions I'm going to ask now, I'm really worried about this from a Murphy's Law point of view in terms of expecting the worst that could happen and being ready for it. And really, my goal is just to make sure we have a safe and, I would normally say affordable, but I'm not sure if someone would call the water affordable, but at least keep the price rises to the minimum because it seems like there are a lot of solutions to the water problem, but it just starts really amplifying the cost of the water, and it has an inordinate impact on people with fixed incomes, with seniors and the working class. So if our groundwater gets salinated, for example, if there's another fire, if it doesn't rain in Northern California this year, I'm really concerned about these margins of errors we have built in. So one of the questions I have is the impact on the city trees, and I know it's come up a couple of times. So I wanted to find out if there's any new news on the trees or if the arborist has weighed in.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I'm so glad you asked because I forgot to mention that in my presentation. It is something that we have been working with our city arborists and are definitely focused on how to help residents continue to properly water their trees if, right now they're currently watering it through their lawn. And we're going to be developing handouts and information to kind of support this and help people understand how they can use soaker hoses, where to put it, how long to run it, that kind of information that I think will be really critical to really preserving our tree infrastructure. And Mrs. Ward would probably add to that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we have been working closely with the Parks Division to specifically get tangible information. It's something that we have been working on for a while, and that's one of the common concerns of our customers is I have a lawn with a tree on it, and I've been trying to water the tree by watering the lawn. And what we are going to be working on resource-wise is showing specifically how to do deep infrequent watering. Generally, that's with watering stakes, which is what a lot of our own street tree department uses. So we're working on handouts, a very robust website, videos with City TV, et cetera, to make sure that people feel like they're equipped enough to be able to protect those resources in their trees.
Oh, great. And is there a sense that there's a certain level of shock that will be affecting trees if people cut back? Or are there any reports looking forward, kind of giving a best-case or worst-case scenario regarding the city's tree inventory?
That's a good question. I don't think I'll be able to answer that. That's something that I can check in with Tim Downey, our Street Tree Superintendent. He's well aware of the regulations that we've been talking to him about and sees the need for better education of the public, but I didn't hear express concerns about the trees, the tree inventory of the city.
Okay. And it's just such an important resource, not only aesthetically, but to the health of the ecosphere. So maybe if there's really good or really bad news, we should try to squeeze them into a future meeting?
Councilmember Dominguez, we'll try to get the Parks Department to come and speak and provide a little more information on that because I think that is a really good topic.
Okay. Regarding the toilets, so our toilets rebate is now unfunded, or I noticed on the website it says currently not funded. Is that correct?
The city's toilet rebate ended in 2014 when the plumbing code changed. All you can buy is an efficient toilet at this point, so there was no incentive to, for customers to choose a low-water-using toilet. But the state toilet rebate has been ongoing, and that's maybe what stopped being funded. I did check it last week, and I think still had money, but perhaps I didn't get a notification that it was out. But that's been going on for about a year and a half is the statewide toilet rebate.
Okay. And on the water-wise rebates, it says rebate funds are not currently available.
For the statewide toilet rebate program?
Blame your toilet rebate. It doesn't specify if it's city or state.
What's the URL at the top?
SaveOurWaterRebates.com?
That is the statewide toilet rebate program.
That's the state, okay. And that's the $100 rebate?
For the high-efficiency toilets. I would also add that those are for toilets that are over three gallons per flush. Within the city, we've done a toilet saturation study. More than 90% of our toilets are 1.6 gallon per flush, so they wouldn't be eligible for those rebate, toilet rebates. When we did have our toilet rebate program, it really dwindled over the past few years because we had so very few of those high-flesh toilets left.
So are 90% of our toilets are 1.6?
1.6 or more efficient. The current plumbing code is 1.28, and they're much better than the 1.6s even in terms of performance. So we've been encouraging people, if they are remodeling their bathroom, to put in the 1.28s because they've been very effective.
So, and the ones that are older than that are, some of these toilets use five or six gallons per flush. So is there a program we can use to target that last 10%? I know when we're talking about percentages and margins, you know, we're talking about these new developments being very efficient. So based on this 1.6, they're really not that much more efficient than the 90%. So it sounds like it would save us a lot of water if we really targeted this 10%. And I don't know how easy or hard that is to do, and if we'd have to knock on everyone's door and ask them, but...
Well, during our water checkups, if we see any of those, they're usually a nice pink or green color. There are some of those very old toilets. When we would see those, we would recommend the statewide toilet rebate. It's unfortunate if that has run out of fens, so we'll check in on that because we weren't notified. But that's what we have been promoting when we find those old. They're always in the guest room, and people try to cover them up and say they don't use them, but we always recommend that they replace them because even the flappers and the interior parts will run out and wear out before the porcelain does, and it's best to replace them for leak reasons.
And that would be a great way to offset any of the economic impacts would be to create a program where we incentivize these remodelings of bathrooms, particularly in houses that may have two or three of these toilets. So that would be something that could possibly offset a moratorium on new building and at the same time give us even better water results, right? Because we're not adding new infrastructure, we're actually replacing the old stuff. So it would be a double win. And I know I've seen other communities are actually incentivizing workforces, and that's kind of comes into the economic development heading we can talk about later, but it would tie in well with this, particularly in the areas of town that do have older housing stock that are looking for excuses or incentives to revitalize. The other thing I was wondering about with the, the AUD has reduced setbacks. So is one of the gains in the water conservation because there's just not as much green space to water, is that part of the calculation?
Councilmember Dominguez, so there's a lot going on with new development and redevelopment of existing parcels. It's not only a complete change out of landscaping to something that's drought tolerant or much more efficient. On the denser developments and mixed-use developments, there's a very limited amount of landscaping that can't be drought tolerant. Commercial projects have to be completely drought tolerant. So there's the changeover of landscaping with the redevelopment, and there is, you know, from project to project, it varies how much open space or landscaping there actually is on a project. The reduced setbacks or variable setbacks with AUD projects, you know, on a related note, we are looking at the amount of open space that these projects are providing. We don't have that data yet to give you, but that's something that we're pulling together, and that could be informative on a number of fronts. So I don't feel confident in saying one way or the other whether that's potentially going to affect their water demand. We calculate water demand based on land use type and either unit count or lot size. So it, and it's accommodates or it takes into account a lot of different factors. So landscaping is one of those factors. And it'd be hard to really drill down and know from project to project what aspect of that project is creating the potential water demand, at least in terms of a factor that we use across the city.
Are we requiring any of these projects to capture some of the rainfall, if there were to be rainfall?
Right. So the city's stormwater management program is applicable to all of these projects, and it varies depending on the size and decision-making body that the projects go to. Some of them have to treat and capture the water, others just have to do voluntary best management practices, which might require them to, or ask them to install rain barrels or disconnect their downspouts to flow into their landscaping. So there are many property owners doing that. That's more typical in single-family homes. So when it rains, we can try to keep more of that water on the site. So certainly overall, the stormwater, stormwater management program has helped not only treat water, but trying to keep it in the groundwater basins and keep it on-site and not flow out to the street, certainly.
Great. Regarding Commissioner's Lodge, Lodge's remarks about Galita and Montecito and their moratoriums, is there something different about Santa Barbara that would make that type of comparison either inaccurate or not helpful? Or why are they doing this and we're not, I guess would be another way to frame it?
I think primarily for Galita, they, their development is much more robust than what we're seeing here. And so it's a much more significant issue there. And I think during the last drought, development in Santa Barbara was much more significant, and that's why it was also, there was a moratorium put on building during the last drought. I just think where we've come as a community, it's much smaller this time around, and anyway, much more of a discussion. And then as far as Montecito, you know, they're into allocation-based, and I don't really know what their demands are over there, but they felt it was important to do that.
Okay. And just a clarification on the AUD housing. My comment was that all of this housing is coming in, or rentals, let me call it rentals because it's not housing in that sense. All these rentals, it's for-profit, market-based rentals, they're all coming in above the median. Is that correct? Median rents, I mean, it kind of would defy expectations that a developer would build something and then rent it out below average?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we don't actually know. We've had very few of these projects, the AUD projects actually constructed and occupied. So we don't yet know that, but again, we are collecting what data we can for our adaptive management program report, and we'll have that ready in about two weeks. But again, it's just very few certificates of occupancy have been issued, and they've been in the smaller projects, just adding one or two units. So we haven't queried them, don't know if we could find out what they're charging for rents.
We had the guy from, is it the Mark? Who was here talking about his rents?
Correct.
I think in the 2,300 to 2,500, and those were above the median. Is that correct?
They're actually within the range of what we consider workforce housing, that's middle and upper-middle income. And I have that data I can provide, again, when we have our discussion in October.
Okay. So, but it is above median level? I just want to be clear about that.
It is above moderate income.
I don't want to be saying things that aren't true. It's above the median income level?
Median income is somewhat equivalent to the moderate income level. The AUD program is looking to target households in the middle to upper-middle income ranges.
And even if you used more of a layman's term, the average Santa Barbara household income is somewhere between $65,000 and $70,000 from the last time I checked. So the rent that that type of household could afford would be, they use usually about 30%. So 2,000 and up would be a little more than what traditionally people have considered affordable for that average household. So that's kind of what I, what I talk about when I say it's above the median or upper income. I'm using possibly a definition that meets both layman's understandings and what the housing programmatic folks would use. And regarding the ability to build affordable housing outside of AUD, I think this is a very hospital community. The buildings that have gone up either through the Housing Authority or other nonprofits have never had a problem either before AUD or during AUD, and it's not...
Mr. Dominguez, can we keep to the council discussion items as it relates to water? I mean, we're going to have a very big...
I'm looking at development restrictions, bullet point number three.
Oh, no, you're talking about median income for rentals, and so that's not about water supply.
I'll give you the nexus right here. The problem is, or one of the problems is, the increase of water prices impacts the poorest residents the most. And they're going to be faced potentially with a sales tax increase, which is also very regressive. While at the same time, we seem to have taken or pushed onto the backburner development impact fees, which are the opposite type of fees or taxes, which would impact the upper class. So I just want to make sure when we're talking, when we're making decisions, we weigh in the other taxes and fees that we're expecting our residents to bear. One comment I want to make regarding how possibly to look for, whether it's lawn violations, leaky pipes, there's an online and smartphone app that Fresno uses called Fresgo, very clever name. And it allows you to report all sorts of varieties of city issues, whether it's potholes, graffiti, fallen trees. And the price for Santa Barbara would only be $5,000 per year. So it's something that would allow us instantly to know about any leaky water installations and these other issues at a very low price and allow us to track them and improve our ability to respond. So based on what I've heard in the report today, I would also support a moratorium. And I'm certainly happy and encouraging that any proposal staff would bring us back, would include a sunset provision, because again, I would want to tie it to our ability to have a safe and secure water supply. So I'd ask maybe Water Department if they could design a sunset date that related maybe to having the D-SAL plant up and running effectively, or Lake Kachuma's ability to serve as a conveyance system restored. So in other words, make these things, two things tied together. Again, I think the AUD, the whole reason to put a hold on it would be to study it and see if it actually provides the workforce housing. Again, there's no evidence that it would, and at the same time, preserve some of that water supply.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, just a sort of philosophical comment, the people, Mr. Hagmark, if I could, the people with lawns in our city comprise primarily owners, and of those, not all, that's 40%. So just guessing, maybe 30% of the people we're talking about in the city have lawns. So just guessing, maybe 30% of the people we're talking about in the city have lawns. Yet we're asking them to absorb the obligations to make us meet our water goals. And I philosophically am saying that I would like to look for something beyond that that would include everybody in the city so that all people feel they're part of this. And we don't go around talking about those damned lawn people or whatever it is, you know, it just, it pits one part of the city against the other. It's not a good way to go. The idea of driving around looking for violators is equally repugnant. Can I think of, I can think of a lot of ways to avoid that. So I just throw that out there so you understand. But I would like to see all of us, not just some of us, accomplish this goal. So along those lines, let me ask, are gardens included in the proposed moratorium or lawn-watering restrictions?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no. Gardens, encourage you to keep watering your garden or encourage plants, fine, trees, great. All this is still something that, again, we're, what we're trying to do is help to prioritize water usage and looking to, in essence, by getting rid of turf or banning turf, ensuring that we have adequate supplies to continue to water the things that I think the community has greater value in, which is the tree and plant infrastructure.
So public areas like Mission Rose Garden or Alice Kick and all those would be accepted?
They're, yeah, completely outside of this. They're an exemption because we're going after turf grass specifically.
And we have established, I think through the questions of my colleagues here, that trees, whether public or private, are an extremely important part of Santa Barbara and we should do everything that we can to maintain those. Different area, how do we avoid surprises like we got recently regarding the Kachuma release? Is that the $64,000 question?
It is. And if there's any upside to that discussion, it has certainly been that surprises are not something that we can handle anymore. And we did have an opportunity to speak with the higher-ups at the Bureau and voice our concerns about communication and the need to over-communicate when it comes to the remaining water in Kachuma. And so I'm optimistic there shouldn't be too many more surprises related to our other water agencies, but you know, wells can go down, things can change, pipelines can break. So we're going to be constantly communicating to try and make sure we can address those as they come up.
Yeah, that was, you know, that's good. But is there any way we can put any teeth into that because they could just shine us on, frankly?
That is true.
The last time we had this difficult, or almost this bad drought, are there things that we did then that we're not yet considering? You may not know, I don't know.
We did, we did explore. So one of the bottlenecks is we've been talking about is conveyance, being able to get our imported water here. We have, we have this water, it's ready to be delivered. I did go ahead and explore, because we did do this during the last drought, imported water through Ventura County. And I reached out to the city of Ventura, which is kind of the bottleneck and they do not, they are state water participants, but they have not developed a way to get state water. So every year they just sell whatever state water they have. But I reached out to them to see, hey, any plans to connect to, I believe it's Callejas or Oxnard so that they can actually pass water through? And they currently would like to do it, but it's a several miles of pipeline that they would need to do. And then of course, we would have to wheel that water through Metropolitan Water District, Callejas, Oxnard, Ventura, and each one of those agencies along the way is going to want a little bite out of whatever we try to wheel through their organization, which led me to the conclusion that I just don't feel that's a viable option. But that was something that they did last time and I don't, there was a lot of above-ground temporary pipeline that I think they did to make that happen. And I don't think we're to that position at this point. If the community wasn't conserving like they would, it might have value to go that direction. But I think where we are with the community responding, I think we have other options that are more viable.
Part of our strategy, going back to what I was saying, making this inclusive, this effort, are we going to put out or have we put out, and I haven't seen it, things that advise people how to save water, such as only wash clothes and laundry when you have a full load, same with the dishwasher, take a bucket to the shower with you and use that in the garden afterwards. Other, you know, stuff that sounds silly almost, but it could make a difference.
We do have that information out there. One of the things that we're concerned about internally is drought fatigue. You know, people are like, oh my God, they're talking about drought again. Good, you know. And so that is challenging. You know, it's challenging, yes, you know, we need to, we need to ask for more. Hate to ask you for more, but this is where we are. And we're actually talking with a consultant right now to help us out with the messaging and branding of this because we do feel that people are kind of tired talking about it. I am too. And so the challenge is, but we still need that response. And I, and I think going back to your message, each individual property owner has an ability to conserve and everybody's a little different. And I think a lot of people have stepped up doing a lot of different changes. I mean, how do you get to 36% conservation overall with a community who has basically done it voluntarily? That is pretty extraordinary. So everybody has done it in their own different way. And so what we're talking about is going after really ornamental turf. It's not really critical. It's not really essential to day-to-day life and asking folks to, hey, it's time to let it go if you haven't already let it go. It's time to let it go because we really need to focus on making sure we have adequate water for this community going forward.
Final question, transitioning to that, could we ask people, or would it not work, to lawn, to sprinkle their lawns just once a week for a while and then fade into nothing? You know what I mean? So I don't know if, I don't really know how plants adapt, but I suspect they do. The less water they sort of, first they turn brown, but they don't necessarily die. I don't know. I'm throwing that out.
And that's what, that's kind of the, so if we do move forward in November with a moratorium, we're looking at a grace period, get the information out to people, us to kind of staff up for it, take effect January 1st. Hopefully we're getting some rainfall. There should be enough to keep most people's lawn alive through the next few months without any water. I mean, I think that is, that is an educational thing. I mean, there's times where we find that people are, yes, it's warm outside, but their days are shorter, you don't need to be watering your lawn that frequently. And so we think this will be kind of be a, kind of a transition period where most people are like, hey, I haven't watered my lawn in a month and it actually looks pretty good. Exactly. So that's kind of that transition during the winter. Hopefully we'll get some rainfall and we can pull back on this. But if not, we're prepared, the community is aware of it and they know come spring, no watering of turf.
Just one final thing to my colleagues. I suspect, although I don't know, that being a Realtor, I suspect that the real estate community is going to talk about the loss in value, which there will be some because there's a loss of curb appeal, prices go down, et cetera. Now, that's not going to have a huge effect on the city's income, but it will have an effect visually on the, on the city. And I think that's important because that's one of the things that people always remark on when they come here, how beautiful it is. And I, I don't want to lose that totally. So please keep that in mind and be conservative, if I can use a word that's not too popular, about how we go about saving things and keep in mind how it'll look. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Well, I really appreciate staff bringing this forward and framing it this way. It's very helpful. But I do think that I'm not ready to go to this step yet because we're there. We have 42% conservation in the month of August. We have the impact of the additional rate increase that just hit a month ago. And I don't know that that isn't going to work. And I think we have been remarkably, the city residents have been remarkably successful in saving water when asked. And I think that adding that message and the urgency of what we're talking about and asking people just to do the right thing and, you know, maybe a campaign as you described about, you know, it's time to really let it go, whatever grass is left, would accomplish what we're trying to do. I worry that a ban has unintended consequences because people's plumbing for their yards isn't as black and white as you just turn off the grass and the rest of the water takes care of itself. It is, it's integrated. People have figured out how to save the water at their own residential level to the degree that they have by just being asked to do it in a smart way for their specific property. And I think there's a lot of creativity and a lot of ingenuity that people are delivering themselves on their specific circumstances that get lost in a ban. I think you start to cause problems with morale when you have water police and you have neighbors looking across the fence and saying they're not doing it right. And sending a message that we want to save trees and it's okay to water, you know, lawn areas under trees in a certain way is just too nuanced to be as successful as we'd like to do. It's my personal call. I know there's absolutely legitimate different views about that. But one specific thing that I thought Mr. Williams brought up, which is really amazing that we don't have, is the bill ought to say what your 40% target is. Your individual water bill ought to have a line item on it to say how many units of water you should be trying to hit to achieve that 40%. Because it is hard for somebody to go back three years and look at their water bill and say, what am I trying to achieve? And I think that simple thing, if we could pull that off and have that on people's bill and say, this is what we're trying to get you to go to. And that's, and however you get there doesn't matter because it really only matters how much we save. And I think that's a better approach, particularly considering the community is there now and we're not asking them to do more. We're just asking them to sustain what they're doing now through the rest of the year.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with Mr. Hart and I also with the anecdotal observations about walking around the neighborhood and seeing what's brown and what's green. The only thing green in my neighborhood is pretty much considered medicinal, I think. So I also am not in love with the idea of having staff going out and trying to do enforcement. I think like we do with a lot of our zoning issues, it's based on the complaint basis. And no, I actually would have to respectfully disagree with staff on this one. I think that neighbors are sensitive to it. I think they, they would be reporting and I, and I have a hard time imagining, and I don't know the math as well as staff does, but the calculus on how much actual turf area is out there versus what we could save and what the potential is. I appreciate the, you know, them doing the math on this, but I don't know how much we really know and what we don't know. I do know that everybody that I know in my neighborhood doesn't have a green blade of anything around anymore. Nobody seems to be watering. And I don't know what our incremental savings would be with a forced restriction based on ordinance. I do think that people have responded remarkably. I think the numbers show it. And to use a term that Mr. Hagmark brought up about drought fatigue, I think we are getting there. And I do think that a citizen pat on the back once in a while is number one, good. Number two is the suggestion Mr. Hart brought up vis-à-vis Mr. Williams' experience is to say, yeah, this is what the numbers are. This is where you need to go. This is when you're a good boy or a bad boy. And I think that's, that would be important. That would allow people to participate on an individual level. I think most people would. And I think a staff is already, I think, Ms. Ward, you mentioned already that when you see anomalies in people's bills that you can, the staff can contact them and say, hey, what's going on? Do you have a leak you're unaware of or are you, do you have a water park in your backyard where, you know, we haven't seen yet? So I think all that's really important, but I think it allows us, the controls we already have at hand. We don't need to create a staff of water enforcement people. I don't think we need to adopt a new resolution. I think the message going forward after today's publicity says, we're talking about this already. But I think if we allow people to perform individually like they have so far, I think they're going to do, they're going to do the job. I am also curious in the progress potentially, Mr. Hagmark, you talked about a disaster declaration for Kachuma and that of course would be a multi-agency effort. But that would be, you know, pretty important for, for us as well as on a state level, restrictions on the use of reclaimed water. And I'm going back to our, our street tree and urban forest situation where if we could potentially, you know, take excess reclaimed water and use that to maintain what might be, people might be using potable water for currently. I think we could see a savings there and certainly could see a maintenance of our very valuable urban forests. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do support yes to the turf grass watering restrictions. The water-wise plants are beautiful, Councilmember Hotchkiss. I'm not worried about the, someone's curb appeal being compromised or just they flower, they're beautiful purple and Matilla poppies, you know, there's, there's ways to do that. And the lawns are just so thirsty, right? And we've sat through these updates over and over and we've heard that in single-family homes, most of the water is used for outdoor watering and we need to cut into that. The lake looks so dry and Ms. Baker's correct, it's scary. I'm yes to developing a drought impact fee and I would suggest trying to find a break for low-income residents, but what Mr. Cullon was saying was the idea of rationing seems a little more fair where you figure out what everyone gets, their allotment, and then if they violate that, then that's the penalty. And I think that's, maybe that's what you were saying, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that that makes it equal. Everyone has, has the burden. And we don't know if the drought's going to go another five years. So if you take a year to figure out a rationing scheme, then that time is well spent. Yes to continuing rebates for replacing turf grass with desert plants. No to the growth management ordinance. I'm looking out at the audience and the police chief is back there. I know she's having trouble hiring officers because of the housing costs here. Nick Welsh is out there. The Independent and KCRW, they have an event called Priced Out next week. This Thursday, just two days from now, there's Tenants Crisis Awareness Day or something. And so we have a housing crisis. That's the word that we use here, crisis. And so when we're talking about balancing policy impacts, I'm just not ready to go for a growth management ordinance or, or a building moratorium when we weigh these other matters. And I will take it upon myself to talk to the business community and the construction industry because the, these economic impacts are real. We can't sit up here and make a decision in a vacuum without getting their input as well. Thank you.
So I think for direction, what I'm hearing is it'd be great if people could stop watering their lawn. The question is, do we want to make it a punitive mandatory process? And I, and I agree with my colleagues that, and yourself who have said, our residents have been amazing. I mean, I think probably top in the state. And if there's a way we can market the request to get them excited to voluntarily do so, maybe that's where we can start, knowing that if we really need to in a few months incorporate something, we could, but give, I don't think we've really sent out the message that here's the next increment of what we are asking in terms of conservation and see where that leads us. There's a great song called Let It Go. I mean, I can picture every five to 12-year-old singing it to their parents and, you know, and I mean, is there something else that we can do that can bring the community together that brings, you know, to try to get this, that one component for next summer there? It's so close and that's assuming no new rain and, you know. So I think what I'm hearing is maybe set up the parameters of putting down an ordinance come, you were saying, January anyway. But what can we do in the meantime to further encourage our residents to specifically look at stop watering your lawn? And then there's a whole bunch of different opinions about moratoriums and things like that, which I'm not even going to, I don't think there's consensus about any of those kind of things up here. But, and then the other, I guess the other, the other thing I heard was some general compliance of looking into what it means to put a drought impact fee together. What does that look like? And I think that's just a long-term financial issue anyway. If I read my colleagues wrong, let me know, but that's, I don't know if that helps you get some guidance. We don't need a motion today, you wanted some direction.
Madam Mayor, just wanted to add real quick to this-
Madam Mayor, just wanted to add real quick to this, and it's, it's challenging, our 12-month average being 40%, what that really equates to, not to try and complicate the situation, is we need to be seeing 45-plus% conservation in the summer, because we know in the, in the winter, there really isn't that discretionary water use, so we expect the community is going to be in the 30s, in the low 30s. And so, to balance that, you have to have these larger numbers in the summertime. And so, that's, that's really what we're kind of focused on, and our community is capable, obviously, they've demonstrated that in August, and we've seen that before, we've hit 40 before. So it's out there, but, but what we're really, when it comes down to the real numbers, we're going to be looking for 45-plus% conservation in the summer, in order to kind of balance that 12-month average at 40. So that's...
Okay. So in terms of a big stick of patrol units going around looking at water, I mean, the real big hit would be in the spring and summer, right? I mean, we'd have a lot more information. Like I said, it's sort of setting it up, and then deciding whether to move forward with it after the, come February, March, is another discussion point. But in the meantime, to really focus on the marketing piece to it, and trying to encourage now, I mean, if, if you have a dead lawn, and by February, you're not going to start watering it in April, because it's no longer there. I don't know. I think, and then just finally, for me, I get, I just, in terms of the effectiveness of the kind of patrolling around, or getting into people's private, like, I don't want to see drones going in back of people's backyards to see if it's green or not. I mean, you know, it just, it's a whole nother layer of enforcement that, it just makes me feel very uncomfortable, that I don't think actually would produce the kind of results we want, and not have the kind of participation that we are desiring. So I'm not sure if that's clear. I saw some lights come on after that. Mr. White, did you want to?
Madam Mayor, just to, just to say, our margin of error is gone. So we're, we're talking about, you know, wanting to do nice things, and we, we just don't have any slack left in the system. So that's, I think that's why, I mean, and, believe me, I was involved in the first landscape police effort, which was a disaster 25 years ago. So I totally respect the, the comments that are made by colleagues about that, it's a PR nightmare. So I think it's a soft version of that would be, would be better. But again, we're seeing the pictures on the, of the lake, we're seeing, there is not, what we basically are doing is, we are importing as much water into the lake every month, that evaporates. We are keeping, we are now able to force, to stave off evaporation, that's how much water we're able to get into the lake each month, is how much evaporates. So, and our wells, look at those slugs of water that are coming out of the ground, of a very finite well system. So that's what has me really concerned. So those are, those are our realities that we're dealing with.
Well, and I want to commend how much time and energy you've been spending on everything water with all the different regional agencies, you know, way more than we do in detail. And so, I appreciate the grave perspective where you're coming from. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We really need to do something today. So I'm going to make a motion that we direct staff to develop a drought impact fee program, with an emphasis on developing an allotment of water. That way, they can spend it on their, their lawn if they want to, they can do, the consumer can do what they want with the water, they just get a certain amount. And that, I think, answers some questions, but we need to act now. So my, my motion, I move that we direct staff to develop a drought impact fee program.
There a second?
Oh, Mr. Kalan wants to second me. I'm joking.
Uh huh. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I think your suggestion has got potential, but not now, and should be one of the things that we look at. Mr. Hart is absolutely correct in saying, if we could provide everybody with a target of what they're going after, that really personalizes it and makes it doable. So those are things that are super important, we've got to look at. But bring it all back as a package, no one will know what to do best.
Mr. Casey, did you want to?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, you know, we wanted to lay out the tough issues that we see coming up, and I appreciate Councilmember White, we're worried, this is serious stuff, and so having to deal with it. We didn't need action today, and so, we took good input, and I think you summarized it well, Madam Mayor, and we can take the next month to try to fine-tune it and develop it a little bit more, and bring back the conversation again next month, at which point we would need kind of action to start occurring. And so, we'll look, we'll see if we feel an education program will get us the savings we have to have. The problem is, is if you miss, and then you come in late, you don't have any more time, and then you're really under the gun during the summer months, when you've got the peak usage, to really kind of dial back real dramatically. So that's, that's our anxiety about kind of waiting for the winter, and hoping to get some runoff. And gosh darn it, I hope we get some runoff, because that would be wonderful.
And certainly, coming back, you'd bring a drought impact fee program together. So I think...
Yeah, we can be looking at the drought impact fee.
The intent of what you were getting at is going to happen, so.
Well, I'm happy to hear that, yeah, good.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez?
So one of the previous comments was about how do we guarantee that these things don't happen? And in my mind, there's really nothing we can do to guarantee that nothing's going to happen. All we can do is reduce demand or increase supply, and it's a long process, it's getting a train moving, and I really wished we were acting today, even if it's just getting staff, getting the ball rolling, whether it's either on coming up with a proposal for the lawn watering ban, or looking at the housing issue more in depth, and coming up with some, with a spectrum of things that may go from the more serious ban that was proposed by one of our residents today, to something that might appease other members on council. So, didn't sound like even the lawn watering motion was going to take hold.
We are taking action today, we gave direction to council, and when there's a specific recommendation, we can take a motion. But I, I disagree that we didn't, we didn't do anything. We took a lot of information, we gave feedback, we are taking this seriously, and including things such as drought impact fees, other water-saving measures, a potential restriction and enforcement. There's just nothing specific to vote on, and they're coming back with those specific things that we can vote on. We're going to have a whole other discussion about AUD, and the whole big thing about growth management and things, which frankly, yes, has a connection, but I want, I want to be very careful about how much one bleeds into the other at the same time. So I don't mean to lecture you, Mr. Dominguez, I just, when you said I don't think we did anything, I just have to take exception to that.
And, Madam Mayor, if I can get council's permission, I mean, I think we would probably feel better as staff to still develop a turf grass watering restriction program to be available for your consideration a month from now. And as well as maybe an alternative program that tries to achieve the same goals, but without that sort of regulation. So we still have those options to pursue, and we've got a month to talk about it with the community, and get more updated information on water conservation numbers for the following month, and see where we're at.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, we don't. Okay. All right. I think we have saturated the conversation here. So, thank you, thank you all for being here. We're going to move on to Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports.